Okay, I'll call the June sixteenth city council meeting to order, all of the roll.
Abby Hanson here, John Hawkins.
Yeah.
Megan McFarland.
Here.
Matt McKinney.
Here.
Logan Welch.
Here.
Pledge of allegiance.
Like allegiance to the God of the United States of America. And to the Republic from which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
What promotion to approve the agenda?
Someone's.
That's it.
Who was in favor of saying aye?
Aye.
This is the time of the meeting that a citizen may address the council on a matter not on the agenda. No minute, no more than five minutes per person. Except in cases of emergency, the city council will not take any action at this meeting, but our city staff, the research, the matter, have the matter placed on the agenda for a future meeting. Um, I'd like to thank you all the volunteers that helped on Saturday and why it went on Friday and everybody on Saturday and all the, all the staff for, uh, on Friday and Saturday. We did a, had a big cleanup when you, we actually, um, had more bins than we needed this year, which is good, but, uh, but we sure cleaned up till about quarter to twelve on Saturdays. So, yeah, so it was a good event. Um, then we got Allison, do you wanna come on up? Yeah, come up today. What's your, um, just your name and address for that.
Seventeen twenty-five two hundred.
Okay.
Good evening, council members. My name's Allison. I'm a resident of Webster City, a landscape designer, an ISA certified arborist and a business owner. I was born and raised here, moved away for college, came back to work and raised my family. I'm speaking tonight not only as a professional, but as a concerned citizen who cares deeply about our community, our environment and the future for my children. Two weeks ago, I shared a post on social media asking if others were concerned about the tree removals happening in town, and their response was overwhelming. Since then, I've been privately contacted by countless citizens, business owners, city employees and their families. And they're all expressing the same two concerns. They're deeply upset about the mass removal of trees and they're afraid to speak out. Fearing backlash, job loss or ref man. Some of those individuals have joined tonight, as you can see, if you're here in support of the trees, could you please stand up? Thank you guys so much. Many others have privately voiced their support. I'm willing to be a voice for those who feel voiceless. But it's deeply troubling that so many of our own city employees haven't been able to express their opposition to the widespread tree removals. This reveals a serious breakdown in trust and transparency within our local government, one that must be addressed. But on to the trees. In recent months and especially in recent weeks, we've seen a devastating number of trees removed throughout the city. While we fully understand the need to remove dangerous, dying or diseased trees, what's happening now goes well beyond responsible management. Over the past two weeks, I've spoken with council members Hanson, Welch and McFarland and met with city manager Herenstein, both in person and by phone. Thank you for listening to me. I asked for transparency about the tree removals, but despite ongoing dialogue, no meaningful change has been made. Explanations remain vague, trees are no longer visibly marked before removal. And so a subcontractor was recently hired to accelerate the process. This is not transparency and it's not the environmental stewardship the city claims to uphold. At our current pace and trajectory, we're on track to lose nearly all of Webster City's mature, centuries old trees. They're an irreplaceable part of our canopy, our history and our identity. This isn't necessary. In past improvement projects, trees were preserved. Today, they're being removed by default. Especially during street work, resurfacing or at the discretion of the city manager with little regard for city code. These trees shaded our parents and our grandparents. They cool our homes, they clean our air, they support our wildlife and they shape our city. Many are already gone and once they're cut, they're gone for good. Speaking of city code, it appears that the city's actions are not aligned with their own ordinance in Article eleven Trees and Shrubbery in the Webster City Code. This code was created to beautify and preserve trees and specifically states that the city forester is to prevent indiscriminate trimming or removal, regulate tree planting and supervise all removal work. None of this seems to be happening with proper transparency or documentation and no city forester has been mentioned in any of my conversations with city government. Who is our city forester and where have they been during this tree removal process? Are you aware that we lost our Tree City USA designation that we held for twenty-five years? It reflected our commitment to responsible urban forestry. Losing that designation is a wake-up call and a clear signal that we're no longer meeting basic standards of tree care and urban forestry management here in Webster City. So what we're asking for tonight is clear and reasonable. Number one, immediately pause all non-urgent tree removals until full transparency is provided regarding the trees that have been chosen to be cut down. Number two, ensure compliance with city code moving forward, specifically by reinstating the role and authority of a qualified city forester to make informed, consistent, science-based decision about tree care, removals and long-term canopy management. And number three, foster a culture of respect and open communication within city government. Where employees, residents and business owners feel safe to voice concerns without fear. We know Webster City is capable of growth and positive change, but we must do better when it comes to our trees, our city employees, our natural resources and our citizens' voices. From Dr. Seuss's The Lorax, I speak for the trees, for the trees have no tongues. Let's work together and let's save some trees. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Well, yeah, thanks. If you wanna talk on other.
I mean, I.
Not, not on the agenda, I mean.
I, I know it's on the agenda, but maybe we can at least throw some information out there to, to help some of the, it may be their misconceptions or, or the interpretations of what we're doing, um, to better, you know, bring everybody up on the same page. The, the last thing I want is, um, any talk of mistrust or non-transparency. I've been on this council for twelve years and I, um, I'm fairly confident and the members I serve with are, are the utmost caliber and transparent. So I don't want that to, uh, be reflected in the community. So if we could at least address maybe what's the plan, that would be helpful, I think. To some.
The plan for, is this, what is, uh, is it, is it Woolsey and second, and the streets up there that you're worried about this, this week or?
Those ones were the main ones that caught my attention. There's trees being removed all around town.
I don't believe we're moving any other trees around town at the moment.
Brandon, do you wanna dress up?
Yeah. So just an update on the, the tree process, what includes, um, to all of our projects. So as parts of our, as part of our yearly CIP projects that include infrastructure and street improvements across various neighborhoods, there have been several trees removed as part of each project. These tree removals were performed under careful review, um, by engineers, city staff. As it pertains to public safety, infrastructure alignment, utility impacts and new sidewalk installation. Uh, so we have four rather large projects going on right now or soon to be started. They include the Brewer and Wilson project, Bee Street, PCC project, Fair Meadow reconstruction project and the twenty twenty-six HMA project, which is, I think, the one that's getting the most publicity. Um, as it pertains to the Brewer Street, uh, Wilson Avenue project, there were twenty trees removed to, by that project. Sixteen of them were recommended by the engineer and that was all seen by you through the plans and specs seen when it comes through council. A lot of this is due for infrastructure. Uh, there were four that were cut, um, by city staff on the south, on the north side of the bridge, on the east side of the road, and that was for runoff issues. Um, there's a curb and gutter on the east side of the road. Uh, so those were cut to allow, uh, for runoff of the road. Pretty much the root system was on, on the side of the road. When it comes to the Bee Street PCC project, uh, there were fourteen trees removed. Uh, pretty much all of those trees, um, except for maybe a select few, were on the east side of the road underneath the overhead electric utility. A lot of you may have seen those trees have been there for a long time. They've been trimmed, uh, I think by our line department or by a hired contractor for the city. You kind of seen they had kind of a, a cut for the utility for the power line to go through. And so we made, uh, the choice, um, as that project was going to be started, uh, to remove those trees. Uh, we did, uh, do a, um, a door hanger, uh, to all them, uh, residents. Uh, we actually did not cut a tree down that we wanted to cut down or we, we thought should be cut down, uh, based off the information we got back from the property owner and from those in the public that say, I, we stopped with, um, my family and we take a picture by this tree because it's so beautiful. So we worked with the homeowner and we talked, talked as in staff and we decided, let's keep it. That's, that's, we don't wanna ruin that for everything. Um, so that, that, that was that project. Uh, Fair Meadow Drive reconstruction project, there were ten trees removed on that project. Pretty much everything was removed on that project based on underground utility and infrastructure installation. I mean, we talked about wanting a five foot wide driveway or sorry sidewalk on that project. So a lot of that, you know, stuff had to move sidewalk on one side, we had to go wider, right away, just no clearance. A lot of them trees had a root system you saw growing over the curb and gutter at one point, so.
What was that street, Brandon? What was it?
Fair Meadow.
Fair Meadow.
Fair Meadow, yeah. So then the last one is the twenty twenty-six HMA project and that's the one where, you know, I think was where a lot of this comes from. So there was twenty-eight trees, um, scheduled to be removed on that project. Seven, uh, were requested, uh, by the engineer. And at that point, um, we sent it out a letter to the homeowner saying, hey, we're gonna be going through this area for this project. Uh, would you be interested, you know, if these trees to be removed, uh, why we're, why we're here and we're addressing these streets? And so at that point, uh, I received quite a few emails, phone calls, um, I think there was twelve of them. For, uh, fourteen, um, trees were asked to be removed by the homeowners. So by no reason did we ask to take them down, did we want to cut them down or just come to you, they can us, said, hey, you operate this, we wanna take you up on it. Um, there was two trees taken down for safety issues. Um, I have that printed off to show you that it's just a tree. We did, we, we actually, when we plow snow, we have to go around it. And if you were to try to trim the tree, pretty much you're trimming straight out the trunk. So that was removed. One tree, um, was removed for overhead utility conflict. It's right underneath the tree on Cathy Lane. And then, um, there was one tree a homeowner, actually two trees a homeowner called and, uh, said, can we do something about this? Can we talk? I would really like to keep my trees or reason why you feel maybe it needs to come down with the engineer reason on this. And, uh, we saved, we, we talked to the engineers, we're gonna not cut one down and we're in the process of another one. And so out of all the numbers that I give you, that leaves, that remains three trees and I'm still working through the process. So out of the seventy-two trees, there's three trees that are unaccounted for and I'm trying to figure out through all these trees, what three of those are and why them or where we're at that. I'm sure there's a reason for it, but I think out of the seventy-two, um, there's pretty good reasons for, um, these being cut. I don't, I don't think we, we didn't intend to, to go out and just cut trees down, um, just reckless. Um, there's a reason for a lot of this. Uh, so primary reasons that we look for tree removal, um, and they are stated conflicts to underground utility improvements, water sewer, electric, conflicts to existing overhead utilities, um, sidewalk upgrades for tree health, roadway or backup curb clearance, current root system affecting curb and gutter flow lines, public safety for visibility and sidewalk compliance. Um, this all started, uh, we started a, a project called Project Upkeep this past winter, um, where we started cleaning up the town. Um, it all started with bridges. We have bridge reports done every year. Our bridge inspector came back and said, you need to do, you need to start grabbing around your bridges. You gotta do it. So that's where we collectively came in and say, it's okay, let's spend three days out of the week and let's try helping you out so we don't have to hire a contractor to do it. That led into, okay, our bridges are done. We're getting a lot of positive feedback from the community. That looks nice. Should've done that earlier. All right, now we're gonna address ditches and entrances of town. And so at that point, um, spilled over to those. We had a lot of positive feedback on, on that, I thought. And, uh, and then got into, um, the line department for, uh, line clearance. We saved money on, um, hiring that out, correct me if I'm wrong, and all this work together, collaboratively with other departments, um, to do that all in-house. Um, and we're gonna move forward with doing street clearance. Uh, we just got a new street sweeper day. I was running the street sweeper down the curb and gutter and I felt like I was swerving the whole time just because I did, you know, a four hundred thousand dollar piece of equipment. That's all I wanna do is ruin it.
So like, and, and you kind of went into two different projects there. Oh, actually a bunch of projects, but two different silos, I kinda see it. So there's the, the bridge trimming and more aesthetic, you know, cleanup.
Sure.
Efforts.
Yep.
And then there's the, um, road, the infrastructure repair thing that you started.
Yep.
And correct me if I'm wrong, but this year we've probably done more or at least planned and have more projects in the works for infrastructure repair, barring like the widening of Second Street, but actual, you know, residential streets than I've ever seen.
Correct.
Yes. And I, I, I think over the years we've seen, you know, let's do a street here, do a street there. So the number of trees that come down are probably are less and it's a trickle, a drop effect over time instead of all at once.
Yes.
So I, I just, I kinda wanna just.
You're paraphrasing that right. Yes, this is the most amount of projects we've done in a long, long time. I think it's good for our community. It's positive for our community. We're going in the right direction, but with that comes other things that happen. Unfortunately, there are some trees now, you know, I think there's things, you know, we're gonna look at, you know, we gotta learn from this and how can we be better? And I don't think we're not, we're ignoring that. Uh, I've talked to John about several things, you know, um, you know, we have worked great with our, all of our departments. Um, you know, there's, yes, we did, um, do a lot of this in-house. Um, kind of scheduled that where we took one employee per department, but try not to interrupt the daily flow of each individual department and not slow that department down. You know, there was days where, you know, you have short staff and so it kind of does affect them, but on the overall, I thought, I thought we handled it really well. I think each department, they're positive and helping out.
And I'm not putting you in a spot. I'm just, I just, I just kind of won't give an expert opinion on this, just based on what I have seen come across my desk uh, on infrastructure repair. This is definitely the most aggressive we've ever been.
Yep.
And I think that's really what's put a magnifying lens on the amount of trees removed in a single summer, you know, maybe compared to past years. Um, and so with that, yes, I see the, the impact that maybe, you know, more people are seeing this and wondering why we're doing it. Um, but I just, I wanna keep it separate, the aesthetic stuff. Because the aesthetic stuff is something I wanna have a conversation with moving forward. Like how, how aggressive do we wanna get with that? And do we wanna continue that? And that's, that's one thing. The other thing is, is actual infrastructure repair. Um, we're doing this at, at an economy of scale type thing, you know, more projects, the better. We can quote them larger, uh, stuff like that. So those two things are kind of separate to me anyway. But, uh, to answer some of Allison's, you know, questions and concerns, I, I personally can't see us pausing the tree removal on the infrastructure repair. I mean, we've, we've talked about this at several work sessions and meetings about what we wanna see done infrastructure-wise in our community, which you and, and, and engineers have been tackling. Um, but I do wanna take the concern of the mass exodus of trees seriously and understand what that means outside of infrastructure. Um, and, you know, some ways we can possibly look at that is the aesthetic stuff, slow it down. Um, you know, we, we, the, the infrastructure is probably the biggest, um, I don't know, right? I guess line item.
Yeah.
On a budget, you know, when, when you think about it and the amount of millions that go into that to keep the water flowing, the electricity running and the, and the roads.
Yeah.
You know, drivable, um, is, is daunting. One of the most impressive things I learned when I got in the council is just how much money we spend on that. And if we can save a little here, you know, spread out a little there, long, give longevity to it for that, just because of how costly it is to our tax base. However, I do wanna look at ways that we could possibly avoid, um, doing this at mass in the future.
Yeah.
So, you know, again, I think we've all learned from this, um, doing, doing this at scale, what could come from that and eyebrows are raised and, and questions are asked and the last thing I want is anyone to feel that we're not transparent as possible. I apologize if we had a poor, you know, interaction or, or feel communications are lackluster. Um, I don't want anyone to feel that way on, on the council for the city or the community, either side of the tribe.
Yeah, we've tried to be very transparent with the homeowners and the public. Um, it's been a, in previous, you know, cutting a private tree. Now I'm in the right way that hangs over into the, into the right way or just hit it at the tree, you know, we've had some bad end run-ins with that, so it's kind of like we shy away from it. I mean, with this project, I went door to door knocking on doors saying, hey, we need to try to cut your tree. We need to get you the eight, eight foot, eighteen foot clearance. But our line departments, they're good at what they do and they wanna cut it professionally, how it should be cut, not just get the square so traffic can go through. We wanna do it the right way. So we've, we've talked to a lot of these homeowners and, and they, I've talked to people through ring doorbells, hey, I'll be home in three minutes and I'll talk to you personally. Absolutely. So sat there, waited for them, talked to them. So, I mean, I wish, yes, it's unfortunate that this, you know, what's going on, but you know, I, I really.
I don't want you to take this, I don't think the, 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 the lack of transparency is from you.
No.
I think the, the community is feeling there's a lack of transparency from the government and, and officials and elected officials. And that's what I, I, and I don't want you to feel like you gotta defend yourself with this. I'm not, I'm not, I, I think the lack of transparency, I wanna make sure is, 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 is clean and, 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 and open, is that of concerns and, and maybe it is city employees or, or, um, community members. I, I pride.
Can I, can I ask, can I push it out in it?
Yeah.
Because, you know, I don't wanna spend all night on this great subject. And so how many people live on a street that's, that's getting trees cut down right now?
Is anybody here that lives on Woolsey or?
Madison. Any of the ones? So you're not personally affected by this?
Directly.
That's right. But so, so with some of the, but you've got people who live on those streets who've asked us to take the trees down.
Yes, but.
So, so it's really, you know, you're, you're now present.
Speak someone if they would like full responsibility for the tree or if they would like to have the city take it down. I don't feel like that's really an option. We'll either pay to take the tree down for you or you're fully responsible if something happens with that tree. Is that what we're, is that kind of what we're telling these homeowners?
That's, that's not, that, not the cities.
It was, it was complete to their discretion. Like I said, we, we kinda had one that was close to overhead utility and she called me and we talked and we decided not to take it down. So, um, not at all, did not at all was that ever discussed where it was, hey, if you don't do it, we're gonna, we're gonna charge you or we're gonna take it down no matter what. That, that conversation was never talked to anybody nor, nor staff. So I hope that didn't get.
Now, I, I, I agree that perhaps we need to have a proper arborist or something to go on. You know, maybe when we go into some of these neighborhoods, we need to have somebody actually come and say whether some of these ones should come down or when we're in cleaning up, you know, ditches, do we take every tree?
And a lot of these reconstruction areas that we have.
Because, well, we, we have had a bit of where we've gone in and, and been like, we've not armed it and.
And we're replacing trees in these reconstruction area too.
But unfortunately that takes a while.
Sure. Absolutely. I'm sure.
So my, my issue with the whole thing is, and, and I went and walked at Madison and Woolsey and to have a look and there's some beautiful big trees there that, that is terrible. We're taking them down. But at the same time, the, it is into the infrastructure and it's got to the state. Now, for some reason it was planted too damn close to the street when it was planted or whatever. And so, you know, I don't know, in some cities.
We expect that same protocol to be the case across the board for all infrastructure moving forward. I mean, I think that's the question is, if you.
Yes, you, I would say, yes, you will.
It's like.
Yes.
That's what you can't.
It's not like we're just.
Well, if we come to do a road and the tree is, 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 is upsetting the infrastructure, then more than likely it's gonna come down.
Um, so that is.
And that's not all the trees in town, but it's not, no, it isn't. But, but it's.
We use the same criteria that we're using on the, and this is the most, this is the most transparent we've had.
Well, hang on, just, you can hang on a sec. So if you wanna talk a lot, you'll have to come up and say your name and, and all that, all right? Because we're not having the discussion from the thing. So, so by all means, come up and then we, you can keep talking.
You just heard what I said. She's ready to talk.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you, Brandon.
Thank you for your time. I'm Jakey Frankman. I live at five eighteen Webster Street, um, grew up here and I'm an ISA certified arborist since two thousand thirteen. Um, I, I totally understand the situation from both sides. Um, I work a lot in commercial art culture. I think that trees are very emotional for a lot of people. Um, and for that reason, I think we need to have a better process going forward. I think we should have a committee of arborists, engineers, citizens, council members, foresters who are helping make those decisions. Um, because we do wanna grow our infrastructure, right? It has to change. Our community is always evolving. It's not the same twenty years, though. It's not gonna be the same in twenty years from now. Um, and we can't expect that. However, I think that it's crucial that we protect what we can and having a team with all perspectives, um, open discussion, maybe not leaving into the, the arms of the homeowner who's lived there for, who knows, maybe they'll live there fifty years. Maybe it's been a year. Um, to them, it's dirty, it's got leaves that you're out there to clean it up. No, there's lots of things. It's so emotional, both positive and negative. Um, so I would just call the council to consider it. I'd call the council to consider becoming a Tree City USA again. I think there's a lot of value in that. Um, and to take action, what we, what we can do is take back what's been cut, right? But we can just have a better process going forward. And that's what I would just ask you as a resident, you know, um, as a professional too, personally and professionally, I think we can make that process, um, better and make some wise choices moving forward in that way. So, yeah, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thanks.
The, um, the, you know, it's like you said, it's, uh, the problems with, when I tried to do Second Street and I wanted to put trees all the way back up, the whole thing. And I went and, and asked numerous people who live on that street is, you know, to try and help me get trees back on. And you'd be surprised that I had probably more than fifty percent of them said they don't want trees back. Which really, which really sort of upset me something terrible because I was thinking, you know, it was looked good before and now it looks like a runway. But, um, but we managed to get some at the, uh, in the wider part of the street. So that's, so that's good. We started something. Um, unfortunately, it's gonna take quite a few years before we see that canopy back. Um, but I guess that was always gonna be that way because if we go in to do a full rebuild of a street where we're doing all the underground infrastructure as well, then it's tough to save the trees. Um, but having said that, I think that, yep, we will, we will take it on board and see if we can, we can do something better in the future. But, um.
Can John or Brandon clear up the subcontractor and why that person was hired?
Um, well, we use subcontractors for removing trees on a lot of different activities, but most recently, uh, the subcontractor was hired to remove those, uh, trees that were deemed dangerous, uh, by, uh, staff, um, following not only recent storms, but ones that have probably been, um, around for, for a little bit. Uh, to alleviate, uh, the work burden so they can continue regular duties.
Isn't there a couple were called? We got a call the other day.
Yeah, there was some calls. Oh, and then the, there were some on Ohio, I think this week that were moved based on several, uh, traffic complaints.
Thanks very much.
All right. Thanks for everyone coming tonight and speaking. I appreciate it. Takes guts to get up here and I really appreciate it. And, and Jamie, to, to just touch on your comments. Uh, I, I, I think you have a really good view on this, uh, kinda holistically moving forward. And I think a committee with some experts would be a good idea, you know, dressed to kick around. And I really enjoyed the conversation on that. It's, uh, um, and Allison, you know, as, as talking on the phone, uh, the, the, the thing I hope for is the concerns you're hearing. I, I, I want them to feel comfortable telling us. We believe you. I I I want them to feel comfortable telling us. We believe you. I I believe you talked to a lot of people. I understand it. But I I want them to feel comfortable coming to us, whether it be an employer or citizen. So please encourage that. And again, thanks for coming up and talking. It's very, very brave and very uh um well spoken.
Yeah, item two is consent agenda. The following items have been deemed uncontroversial. Retune actions approved by the council on a single motion. If a council member or member of the audience wishes to have an item removed from this list, we consider it not its normal sequence on the agenda. Um, I have minutes of June second. B is a claims and fund list. C is reports of wastewater, electric water for May. D is a police department activity report for May. E is a fire department report for May. F is the treasurer's reports for March, April and May. G is a recommended approval for issuance of a beer and liquor licenses that our department of commerce for the following. A renewal of a class C retail alcohol license for Lamita's Mexican restaurant at five hundred Second Street. Amendment to an add outdoor service area for Wildcat Distilling Company at six twenty six Second Street for the Parklet area until October thirty first. H is a resolution directing the publication of gross wage salaries for full time and part time city employees for calendar year of twenty twenty four. Um, and a resolution authorizing issuance of a cigarette, tobacco, nicotine and vapor permits for twenty twenty five to twenty six year. Uh, and then an appointment of one member to the Planning and Zoning Commission, Carolyn Cross, for the term ending May thirty first, twenty twenty nine. And then appointment of two members to the Hotel Melita Tax Board for the terms ending May thirty first of twenty nine is Linda Conway and Jamie Sizer. Uh, then I have an appointment for one member to the Airport Commission, Dawn Knutson, for the term ending May thirty first of twenty nine. And do you want me to throw?
Let's approve those. We approve A through uh L currently.
Second.
But up through, yeah, up through I.
Up through I.
I think it's.
Lower case.
Yeah. No, we're not. We're in, I will. I want to do it separate.
Okay.
Yeah, we're gonna be.
I think it's been a separate.
A second, if there isn't a second.
All right. All in favor, so I.
Aye.
And then we have um the uh concurrent to inform of hiring the police chief um.
Uh, Mayor and Council, the item before you is concurrence with appointing Steve Hanson as police chief. That uh hiring process included the use of a professional search process, input from city staff, council members and community members. Uh, proposed start date is June twenty third. I can answer any questions that you might have.
No, it's a good deal.
Yeah. I move to approve.
You've second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Item three, general agenda, public hearing six oh five. I think we will pass that. A public hearing and proposal to enter into a general obligation corporate purpose loan agreement. I'll open the hearing without any written objections.
No, there are none written.
Uh, there are any oral objections. And. Close the hearing. Okay, Daddy.
Good evening. So we're asking for authorization to bond for two million eight hundred and twenty thousand dollars to pay for a street sweeper, uh snowplow and phase two of the Flaramette Street project. In addition, we will use proceeds to pay for issuance costs. Our initial loan payment will be a ninety thousand dollar interest only due June of twenty twenty six. We did not levy for this payment, so our plan would be to either use um reserves in the debt service fund, uh remaining proceeds lost uh or lost. Um, the principal and interest payments that will begin in fiscal twenty seven will come from lost and road use. Um, the final payment for our current issuer, twenty sixteen Geo Bond, will take place in the twenty twenty eight, twenty nine fiscal year, at which time we will evaluate the levies to see if payments for this twenty five bond can be paid with the debt service um that uh with the debt service fund without affecting the overall levy. Um, otherwise, we'll just um use the lost and and road use if if so.
Okay.
So I don't know if there's any.
Any questions? Yeah, I'll uh call for a resolution taking additional action on proposal to enter into a general obligation corporate purpose loan agreement.
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 B is the second reading of an ordinance amending the code of ordinances of City Webster, City Iowa, amending section one one eight of chapter fifty pertaining to solar energy systems and the corporate limits of City Webster, City Iowa.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. As you mentioned, this is a second reading of um an amendment to uh ordinances relating to solar power. You can see that on page four of uh the uh the ordinance, the highlighted areas that uh which is being added. Uh, and it says, as part of entering into an interconnection agreement or other required agreement between the customer and the Webster City Municipal Electric Utility, customers shall at all times abide by the interconnection standards for parallel installation and operation of customer owned distribution generation facilities as established by the municipal uh Webster City Municipal Electric Utility. Failure by a customer to abide by said interconnection standards shall result in immediate termination of said interconnection agreement or other required between the customer and the Webster City Municipal Electric Utility. Uh, we were intending to have a copy of the uh interconnection uh standards uh attached to this. We will uh can bring that uh to the third reading or you can uh opt to waive it, uh but those are linked. Corn Belt is still reviewing them.
Wait, you want to wait for the third reading? Yeah. Call for motion.
I'm moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Uh, item C is a second reading of an ordinance amending the code of ordinances of City Webster, City Iowa by amending article two, division two, section twenty three dash sixty six and vital discharge in city restricted fireworks amended.
This is an ordinance related to the discharge of fireworks that Chief Stansfield discussed with the council at last meeting. Um, I am trying to find a copy of it. Can you pull it up? Okay. Uh, it has to do with the dates and times, uh especially because this year um July, if July fifth should fall on a Friday or Saturday, it extends the time. Believe there was one amendment or edit, I should say, not an amendment to the uh former draft. Zach, would you go over that?
Yeah, so the as I think it was Councilman McKinney pointed out, the last time we had nine AM until eleven PM on the third uh through July fourth. So it actually gave you like forty hours versus it was supposed to be nine AM to eleven PM on July third and same on July fourth. And then uh that was only changed. The rest of it is still the same. So nine AM on December thirty first until twelve thirty on January one. And then the add of uh the July fall, July fifth should fall on a Friday or Saturday or any given year. They would get a nine AM to eleven PM on said dates as well. So on that stage, July fifth. Uh, so this year, I think, if I remember right, I think they do get three days this year.
Yeah.
Yeah, it falls on us. The fourth is a Friday.
Yeah, so you get July third, fourth as well this year.
But they lost like four or five years until it happens, right?
Yeah, yeah.
And I know we have to change our wording, but really, I mean, it's the state.
Changed that this.
Yeah, the only difference between us and the requirement of the state code is the fifth now.
Yeah, oh, cool, cool. Yeah, because that's something we had added. Th- this is just the minimum set by the state.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah, exactly.
Well, I watched you all discuss this when I was sitting on the beach watching the sun about last two weeks ago. So that's fine. I looked my phone up watching you guys do this. I could only see.
You're kind of hard up for entertainment.
Yeah, I was gonna say, who tunes into a county on the beach?
Yeah, it was nine o'clock in the morning. Nine o'clock tomorrow morning. Somebody needs to go watch the show. Yeah. Anyway.
So that was it.
So uh, so you did, yeah, it was actually was a pretty good discussion, yeah, isn't it?
And we are asking you wave the third just because we don't.
Because of timing.
Yeah. Yeah.
I move to approve.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Call for a motion to um to waive it, waive the third reading.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Call for motion to pass and adopt.
All moved.
Thank you.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, item D is a second reading of an ordinance amending the code of ordinances of Webster City Iowa twenty nineteen by adding a new article pertaining to the debt subjects to the set off program.
So this um is required by the Iowa Department of Revenue to set up a program, which is formerly the offset program. Um, in order to implement their their program, we have to have an ordinance stating the charges that will be submitted to them. So it's it's the same as the offset where uh we would receive like income tax returns, casino winnings from the state on that debt.
Been good for us.
Yes, on the utility side, it has the department charges a little tougher, but.
Yeah, yeah, true. Okay, call for motion.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, so I.
Aye.
And then uh, yeah, that's the second reading. Okay. Don't want to wave it. You do my, it's not that.
The only issue of waving it is that we can get it set in earlier so you start the program.
Yeah.
You may want to consider waving.
We're essentially replacing one program with another.
This is.
I'm I'm moving to wave it.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Get to pass and adopt the thing enough.
Move to pass and adopt.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thanks, Daddy. You got another one? Yes. Okay, second reading of an ordinance amending the code of ordinances of Webster City Iowa twenty nineteen by replacing chapter forty eight, article two, division two, section forty eight dash fifty six, establishing new rates to be charged for electrical energy sold by the city Webster City.
So during our budget workshop in late March, um the electric utility summary forecast had indicated the need for an additional three hundred and fifty five thousand five hundred dollars. To keep our fund balance at the adopted balanced policy of thirty three percent. Um, the majority of the need uh for the increase is a two point three percent increase in purchase power that we have received from Corn Belt. Uh, our current electric rate ordinance was passed and adopted July third of twenty seventeen, at which time base and energy rates were increased by six point two five percent. Residential um went from twenty two thirty to twenty three seventy. Uh, commercial single phase eighty to eighty five, three phase one twenty to one twenty seven fifty. These base rates um are still the same today. Uh, following the twenty seventeen increase, energy rates um have had an annual one percent increase that began August one of twenty nineteen. The one percent increase is implemented each year on August first. The industries also do receive a one percent increase for power supply, base demand and transmission demand. They're the only classes that are built um on the demand at this time. The proposed ordinance um has a three percent across the board increase on all base and energy rates to all classes to take place August one of twenty twenty five. With an annual one percent increase on the energy, power supply and transmission, just as it states now, beginning August one of twenty twenty six. So uh Mayor Blair Metzger, our city's um electric engineer with DGR, has provided a rate comparison spreadsheet for residential and small commercial that you can see what, based on usage, usages, what that might affect um residents and and small commercial. The commercial, larger commercial, you know, the the variances are are quite large. It's um you really just probably need to um each individual, the residents are, I think he has like six hundred and eighty one.
I'd pull it up, but it's not opening.
Okay, I think he's showing like six hundred and eighty one uh units, uh kilowatts per month as an average, and it was two sixty four. I had I had the spreadsheet that I had used in years past. I was coming up with an increase of anywhere from a dollar seventy six to five twenty four per month for an average residential account. And I just had, just looked at lots of different accounts, so.
It was two sixty one. Two dollars and sixty cents, I think. I think that's what they had for the average. I've got the the average one was two dollars sixty cents on it. Anyway, there's my evidence. Yeah.
For the one that Blair had?
Yeah.
Two sixty four.
Yeah.
That's residential.
Yeah, the average. There was an average.
It was an average.
Okay, thank you.
Which is, you know. I think that that's pretty reasonable considering having better than I haven't had a rise like that in a while, so.
Well, when we get purchase power, it comes at a higher cost than we have to make up for it somewhere, so. Nobody wants to raise the rates, but if we're getting charged more for power.
Yeah, that's that's a little bit last week, you know, like like anything, if you're buying the the good and reselling it, and you you have to follow the the cost of goods with that. And uh the majority of this raise is due to that, you know, and 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 that's one thing I want the community to know is when you, again, we're buying the power from Corn Belt and when they raise the rates, we we fail suit. Um, no one likes to raise these. We've been very conscious of these rates. I think over the last ten or so years, we've really looked at them. Um, we had a big jump a while back. We haven't had much since. Um, and again, I'm glad it's only three percent. That's, I think, uh palatable, but um, you know, they all add up. So uh I don't want to be insensitive to anyone's budget or how it may affect that. So um but again, I feel it's necessary.
Call for motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Next, Daddy. Um, call for a first reading of an ordinance amending the code of ordinances Webster City Iowa by amending section four eleven of chapter forty six pertaining to parking within corporate limits in the city of Webster, City Iowa.
Oh, this is.
This is a pretty exciting ordinance.
Yeah.
So.
This is paying.
When we recodified the ordinance in two thousand and nineteen, at the time when the company was going through it, we were removing all fine amounts that were listed in the ordinance. And instead, we were sending them to our fee resolution um so that we could, every year when we adjust our fee resolution, we can also adjust fine amounts. This one, forty six dash four eleven, did get caught is is what happened. And when we were in court on it the other day, our fine on the fee resolution says thirty dollars, this says twenty five dollars. So uh what we did is just an amendment to, instead of having where you save the fifteen and the twenty five and the hundred, it just simply refers them to the fee resolution, which is now aligned with all the other ones. So that's what this ordinance changes.
These legal guys are always getting to us.
Yeah. So there you go.
Okay, call for motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
G is a resolution to set a public hearing to consider the amendment of the code and code of ordinances for the city of Webster, City Iowa twenty nineteen, section fifty dash one eighty four for off-street parking required for July seventh at six oh five PM. This one sure is here.
This one's mine. Good evening, Mayor and council members. Um, so the item before you is just a cleanup item for our ordinance that we currently have. Um, that actually this one and my following agenda item as well. So we've been trying to work towards cleaning up um the different parking that we have throughout the city. Um, it's been a year of somewhat confusion on what is allowed um with our proactive approach with nuisances to. We're just trying to make sure that it's clear enforcement um from the planning department as well as the police department. So this one's really just stating um that in order for a park off-street parking to be allowable, it must be of concrete. Um, we have a lot of gravel or request for gravel driveways for as a second driveway um in our residential. So we're just defining that um the parking has to be concrete. So right now, all I'm asking for is to set a public hearing for this this ordinance amendment. And that would be for our next meeting July seventh at six oh five.
Okay. Call for motion.
Go moved. Second.
All in favor, so I.
Aye.
Item H is a resolution to set a public hearing to consider an amendment to the code of ordinances of Webster City Iowa twenty nineteen, chapter forty six, four two, article seven, controlled access facilities for July seventh at six oh five PM.
Again, this is just a cleanup um uh with our requests um for driveways. We've been having some driveways pop up that really lead to nothing. Um, it's just a second driveway that's there. So we are trying to clean it up so that we are actually following our SUDAS guidelines um and just really defining more of what is allowed so that there's a clear understanding um to our community and also the department who's enforcing these um code sections. So again, this, right now, we're just requesting a public hearing be set for July seventh at six oh five.
Go approve.
Second.
All in favor of saying. Item I uh is a resolution approving the final development, the linked development number two, Webster City, Iowa.
Yeah, um so this is just the final plat for links development two, which is up on Edgewood. Um, the council did approve the preliminary plat for this subdivision and the proposed plat. Um, final plat does reflect the intended subdivision layout and is consistent with the approved preliminary plat. All of the streets within the plat are existing in our public, public streets. Um, the lot sizes will not change from the pu- the preliminary plat. The plat does show asterisk placeholders for um duplexes, however, those do not reflect the final. Location of those duplexes, the developer plans to group the duplexes together throughout the development so that they're not just scattered throughout the. Single-family residential units. Um, this did go to Planning and Zoning Commission and they recommended the approval. Um, the duplexes will be addressed during the building phase, so tonight I'm just seeking approval for the final plat of links development two up on Edgewood.
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor of saying.
Thank you.
Thanks, Erin. Item J is a resolution providing for a notice of hearing on proposed plan specification as opposed form of contract. Form of contract and estimate costs for the construction of the twenty twenty five chip seal program, setting dates for July twenty first at six oh five P M.
Yes, so I know this is, I want to go over everything, we discussed the last couple of meetings about the chip seal. Project and locations that you guys have identified and what you're interested in doing, and we have um. Pretty much focused on the areas and now it's time to just go out, I forbid.
Call for motion.
Still moved.
Go ahead in favor of saying. Thanks, Brandon.
Thank you.
Um, K has discussed Hamilton County fair funding through hotel-motel tax program, I've got two members here tonight. Was that through a long meeting, just finished?
Jamie Griffin, I am the manager at the Hamilton County Fairgrounds, uh we are vastly approaching my eighth fair. Um, in less than forty days, but at least counting. Um, the Hamilton County Fair is a century of tradition, community and growth, over a hundred years of community tradition. Established in nineteen seventeen, the fair is the longest running public event in Hamilton County. Serves both local residents and visitors that come throughout the week. Our organization is governed by twelve members of the fair board. And is operated by one full-time staff member, seasonal part-time help for the fair and a year-round groundskeeper. Annual fair week has a big impact on everyone. Last full week of July, you're ready for the town to be full of people. That are maybe not here often, but come for the fair, a signature summer event in Webster City. Some key highlights are the community parade, the parade has been a hallmark community event. That is held within Webster City and is personally one of my favorite events of the whole entire fair. Over five hundred parking passes are sold, which gets people into the fair the whole week long. At the trailer races, over four thousand people are in attendance to cap out what some of the fair board members would call the worst day of the fair, the last day. Central Iowa Showdown also draws eight other counties to Hamilton County and Webster City on Sunday of the fair. Coming to exhibit their livestock animal in what is one of the biggest. Livestock shows that can be held in Central Iowa, we host a Central Iowa Showdown where nine other counties bring animals and each species. To our fairgrounds and are here all day on Sunday. Last year I went to a gas station during a cattle show and the mom in front of me was looking to buy Tylenol. And didn't know I had any connection to the fairgrounds, they're like, oh, what are you doing in town, she's like, I'm looking for Tylenol over at the fairgrounds and I don't know where else to go and I'm like. Oh, yeah, good to have you and you know, so people are around not only during the fair, which is nice, um alright. Buildings are reused all year round, beyond fairway, fairway, we are a multi-use venue. And often forgotten in Webster City because of where our location is, which we are not complaining about. We host many cattle shows and sheep shows without being during fair week. And the last cattle show had over four hundred entries and. The American was full, gridiron was busy and so was the saloon for sure, and those are just the ones we heard of that asked what was going on at the fairgrounds. Weddings and special events take up about seventy five percent of the weekends, as we do have three buildings available to rent and even more if you. Don't need it to be air-conditioned or heated. Our financial needs and rising costs generate equals a greater need for support. Operational costs are increasing for everyone. Insurance, maintenance, staffing, and our goal is to maintain quality programming and our facilities upkeep. The fairgrounds has a lot of space that sometimes when you just drive through, and let me tell you, I have regulars that drive through daily. Often don't see, they see what they come to look for, mostly the racetrack, don't worry, that hasn't moved, but. They don't see everything that needs our attention. The city's support to the fairgrounds would be substantial. And the fact of showing your support and the community partnership that we could do. And we would like to request ten thousand dollars annually and establish a relationship like the chamber has with the city. And the funding would be publicly noticed throughout the fair and all year long is. The fair is just a small piece of what the fairgrounds does. Why the fair matters is a lot of reasons, but I'll try to narrow it down. We strengthen local pride and engagement, we draw regional visitors and boost economic. Development out there, even though sometimes it's maybe not noticeable. Others often gather in our space and it's a space for all ages, we have things that happen at the fair that. You can be pushed around in a stroller to the ones that are trying to get around just so they can see their great-grandkids show. In the end, the fair isn't going anywhere, but we would like to thank you for your consideration of partnering with us and helping us serve. The city and all of Hamilton County better, we hope to see you all at the fair at the end of July. And hope you join us for the parade, which is my favorite. Thank you.
Thanks. Zach, you're not going to sign anything?
I'm here for more support.
This is, this is a request for using Hotel Motel.
Reggae sat down too soon, could you come back after the? Sorry, I, I'm sorry, Logan. But I believe uh if I could just provide some background, yes, um the fair has approached the city council. Uh, in requests for ongoing operational support as a result of um. Increased operating costs, uh and um. I did identified on item K, the Hotel Motel program, uh given its linked links to um tourism. And uh that that has been targeted for other areas of tourism in the area, of course, the council's familiar with the ordinance requirements for. Those types of set-asides and and how that funding mechanism works, uh but the fair had. Uh, written us, I think, a few months ago and then requested an opportunity to speak with you directly on the matter, so that sets the table for this uh request.
So like, this would be outside of the, the, the grant application process, right, just be using the funds directly.
Yeah, every year.
I believe, uh, I believe that to be the case, they request a carve-out of the funds similar to what has been carved out for, I believe, trails and. Um, the chamber accounts.
You know, I mean, it, you're one of the longstanding. Things for tourism in Webster City, I I I don't see an issue with it, you know, at at least from my stand, I'm going to open the conversation, but.
I don't either, I'm going to agree.
I guess the only thing I'd be worried about is, you know, the Hotel Motel Board just making them aware, you know, you know, but. A- again, you know, that's.
Do you have any current stuff coming from Hotel Motel, actually, there isn't any past ones.
So, in the past, we had, um, we would go for certain things, but maybe. We weren't as direct as they would want, or we did get it one time, um, when it did switch to one time of year. The grant is due tomorrow and you find out like the day before fair. So if it is just strict, like, that's where I felt like it wasn't fair to the city, because if we find out the day before fair. I can't go change everything and put the city logo on it. Um, so I think that's hard, but as as a whole.
No, I only meant, I only meant, did you, do you have a current, you know, because. It, it did you apply for something last year and you haven't used it yet?
No, 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 nothing is.
There's the, um, so but the um, the racetrack must have a, yes, man.
Yeah, as a member of Hotel, I mean, I saw this on the agenda, I looked and they haven't applied for anything in the, in. Pre-pandemic, I believe.
Okay.
Yeah, so Fair Foundation has though, and so is the Speedway.
Yeah, that's definitely has. Conversation is to be had about that at some point.
Yeah, I, I don't, personally don't see any issue with it, but, I mean, it's a, don't we forget about. You're out there, but we forget about you.
Well, if it assists the council, um, what I can do is uh work with Zach uh on the language that you would consider. Uh, work with the, communicate with Hotel Motel Board about the request and then also um. Uh, provide a background, Dottie and I can uh find out the um. Allocations that have been made to uh the fair in the past.
I did reach out to Andy Sol, the chair of the uh Hotel Motel, and this is the avenue that he directed us towards. So we did, we have gone down there.
That's the thing, I don't want to step on her toes.
I think this is perfect for what's. You know, our funds are for, and I think that, you know, the economic impact especially. Is exactly what we would be looking for to to do that for.
It's right in line.
And I think as of, as going through the grant every year, if it's something that council and. City manager, et cetera, believe is going to, you know, continue to help the economic impact of our town, I think, so, right. Much in the way the uh. The chamber is something, so.
Yeah, yeah, I'm I'm fine as is, but if you'd like to prepare something.
Yeah, for your review, we don't have to consider adoption immediately, just additional background. I think the fair boards was simply inquiring as to the temperature, you know, before we we did that.
That sounds good.
All right. Receive staff update on second street structures, Ariel, that's you.
Uh, yes, please come to the podium. But I will, I will kick this off and. You know, I've been advised that in June, we're supposed to limit the council meetings to no more than so long, but uh this, so this might take a little longer, but. I'm joking, that I was not advised to do that, that was just a joke, I, so I apologize to the public, we don't have a time limit on council meetings. Um, I think the purpose of this agenda item, which is titled receive staff update on second street, we do not have any formal memo. Uh, to present to you tonight, uh it is simply to acknowledge that in the last four weeks. Uh, there have been jersey barriers erected um around three structures in the downtown. Um, and uh it is not something that we proceed with um. You know, just to do, yeah, the jersey barriers are a result of structural reports that have been collected on these buildings that indicate. Uh, that they're either needing to be braced or that they possibly could um, uh pose a risk to the public. Uh, as a result, we have quartered off those areas in the case of uh emergency, because we have publiced, as public officials have been notified of that. Uh, in the case of uh the three that have been barricaded, the first is uh. Uh, the, the building um that houses uh the McNeil uh business. Uh, after some uh upper story repair work, uh the facade of that building began, uh noticeably. Uh, I don't, heave might not be the rest, uh the right word, but um. Gravitating towards the the sidewalk, uh we've worked with the um property owner to um. Discuss options, but we are in the very early stages of uh working through that uh structure. Uh, the second, of course, is the uh Colter's Building, as uh several Webster City residents might remember it. Uh, we have sometimes referred to it as the Hubbard Building, um. Again, same, same uh structural issues that are are present in uh several of the downtown businesses. Uh, we have uh um obtained a quote um for the council's consideration, however, we're not formally presenting this. Now, it's just to give you an idea of the magnitude of cost, which would be approximately a hundred and fifty thousand dollars uh to. Um, um demolish, and that does or does not include asbestos remediation.
It was seventy, between one seventy and one hundred and fifty.
Yep, so um just. So just sort of to give you the ballpark, and then there's obviously questions about the structure next to it that. Used to uh house Kelly's Inn, in the event that it would be. I'm not saying that we're going to take the building down, I'm just saying, in that scenario with the costs, um. And other experiences you've had in the downtown, there would likely be other questions to, to discuss. Um, in uh regards to what I will refer to as the Lotus Building, which is next to the Rivez Park, which has also been. Uh, barricaded off, at least a portion of it, um. After the storm, uh, you know, uh, not the most recent storm, but maybe two or three storms. Uh, the siding was blown off, this revealed structural issues, we've begun working closely with the nonprofit. Uh, and uh are likely close to coming forward to the council with a proposal to use uh low to moderate income. Um, funds that we have gathered from our TIF districts to assist them, stabilize the building and. Potentially remodel into two units that could be used for that purpose, that, of course, will be at the council's discretion. Uh, it is a large costly project and will require the entering into of a development agreement with the nonprofit. Uh, but we are in the early stages of discussing with them uh those possibilities. Uh, there are other buildings in downtown we are aware of that uh are having structural issues, we are either communicating with those property owners. Uh, some are in the court process, some will now um. Be applicable to the various codes that the council adopted, whether it be vacant or property maintenance. And we're at the beginning uh stage of that. Uh, that really concludes my update on the installation of the Jersey barriers, I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have. I just want to remind the public that um we. Uh, are aware of this issue, we are really working hard to figure out what to do. Um, and as we know in other encounters that we've had with structures, it's costly. And so we, we are reviewing what available funds we might have, uh including the Riverview TIF. Uh, including possibly designating a larger uh TIF area for the purpose of of investing in this area. As well as, of course, collecting the council's strategic guidance and feedback, we happen to run into a situation where. On the ground issues with these structures is sort of um ahead of the policy discussion. And how we want to go about having uh a resolution or what our, our future is in this area, and so we are racing. Um, to have that policy discussion, we just don't have um that many great answers yet, but we are working on it. Uh, and in the next item regarding the design guidelines, which um. Ariel can go over with you as as part of it, we've even reached out to state officials to talk about how to leverage additional state funds. Which can sometimes be tricky, and this was one of the things that they said, you know, if you don't have these adopted, we're really uh. Not as interested in assisting and partnering with you as others, it's considered sort of a uh, a um. Marker of how serious you are about uh your, your, your downtown. Uh, these are guidelines, they're not requirements, but that is uh why they appear on your agenda tonight, just to try to continue to el. Elevate that policy discussion as we figure out what to do here. I can answer any questions you might have, um.
No, I, I definitely seen a lot of those Jersey barriers, as you submit barriers, whatever they call them. Going up around properties and I'm getting asked a lot of questions, what we're doing with it, and you know, there's really not a, not a clean answer, you know, um. So I, I appreciate your expediting that process and figuring out how we're going to address them all, because. Uh, seems like every month we have something added to the list and.
Item M is a resolution adopting our Economic Development Authority, I E D A, design guidelines.
So as John um alluded to, um city staff and Oddie Maxie of the Ames Alliance. Invited Jimmy T, um that's what he's known as, if you haven't got Jimmy T, he's the.
His name is Jim Thompson. So I just want to make sure for the record here. His name is Jim Thompson, so I just want to make sure for the record here.
Uh, he looked up to Webster City, this was shortly after the McNeil building or also, um, probably best known as Monroe Supply. Started having that, um, buckling towards the windows on the second level. Um, we sat down with Jim and he told us that, you know, he's been here multiple times. Things that need to change within Webster City are happening, um, he alluded to the vacant building ordinance which we had adopted, so he was happy to hear that. Um, as well as property maintenance, which we have also readopted to include our commercial buildings. Um, the third thing that he had mentioned is these, um, design guidelines. Also, as John mentioned, these are not a requirement, they are strongly just a guideline. So that if we start looking at facade programs or any kind of structural. Programs in our commercial district, you know, we can really try to make that, um, connection in our downtown so that we. See the same kind of design throughout the entire town, um, district, so this did go to planning and zoning, um. At last week's meeting and their recommendation was to adopt these, um, so I have those here tonight for you. I can answer any questions, um, but the biggest thing I want to mention again is that they are not a requirement, they're just. Strictly a guideline, um, this isn't going to be part of our property maintenance code, it's just part of. The, you know, future incentives for the downtown.
No, yeah, I was looking through it and it's very interesting, some of the recommendations they make, cause I've, I have two questions for you, one. Jimmy T, if one were to formally, uh, say hello to him, would be Mr. T?
Question.
Okay.
Maybe.
Uh, it's awesome having all these guidelines and stuff and, and looking at them and one thing I hear about, and I guess I just want to say this publicly to. You know, keep it on your radar, is a lot of business owners downtown, you know, really like to have a sh, a hang a shingle. You know, like perpendicular from the building, you know, and I see on your guideline, it doesn't really say much of it, then it just says. So, so tall unless it interferes with, with the public ordinance, which we have an ordinance, doesn't allow that, right, like we have to have it flush. So that's something to think of too, yeah, signage.
So you can, um, yes, it can, it has to be ten foot from grade and it can only go four feet above, or four feet.
Sure, I, I personally don't want, but I just, a lot of, you know, I'm not, not saying I don't want the ability to, just on my building. You know, but some business owners like that shingle looking, so and just read through some of those, just kind of, you think of things that are kind of. Different about different downtowns and, and, um, something we might take for granted and. I guess what I'm getting at is, we're, we're doing this for longevity of our buildings and, and keeping the code, um. I guess property owners up to speed, I'm on toes, that could help them last longer, but while we're doing it, we should probably also maybe look at. Ways to just beautify, you know, and make it look cooler, different, more unique, so I, I, I like this recommendation, cause it, it kind of, it touches on both. It touches on, you know, longevity of materials and things that look more aesthetically appealing, so I like it.
And the reason a lot of buildings, just a side note on that, a lot of, um, buildings put that lane signage up is because then. When somebody's walking down the street, they can already see where they're next to, that's. The background.
Like if you go to a place like Galena or something, you know, it just, it just gives it a more quaint feel.
Well, it's helpful with the north-south business as well, if you're going down north-south, you can't see.
Uh, perpendicular roads and stuff down here.
So when you're looking at that, if you have a north-south road and you're able to have that, it helps. Especially during market nights and things such as that, so.
Absolutely.
Yeah, any professional guideline, I, it seems very, you know, elaborate, so I, I. See, I don't see how it could hurt, I guess I'm getting it.
Okay, call for motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Call for motion of Jen.